I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation. Today with us is Pastor Kent Brothe from Shepherd of the Hills.
Let's pray. Sovereign Lord, we give you thanks and praise that we live in one of the most beautiful places on earth, for the climate, for the safe, just the safe environment and that beauty. We give you thanks. We also thank you for this city and all those who serve it, every single employee of this town. We are grateful for them, we pray for them. And we also thank you and pray for the mayor and this council as they make decisions that are important. We pray for wisdom and discernment. In God in this town, we come from so many different parts of this country and we also come from so many different parts of different viewpoints, political opinions, religious convictions. Help us to more and more choose love and respect, understanding and patience. And finally, we pray for safety for all citizens, for our children especially. We just pray that you would guard them and keep them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Beth.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor LaChee?
Here.
Councilmember DePorter?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson is absent. Councilmember Yates?
Present.
And Councilmember Magazine?
Yep.
Okay. I just have a short economic development report. We only had one meeting since our last council meeting, and that was a MAGA meeting. Discussions continue with the EPA to streamline the exceptional event reporting. When Arizona has what the EPA classifies as an exceptional event, like a big dust storm or a wildfire, the amount of paperwork that the EPA requires is overwhelming. MAGA is asking the EPA to recognize that Arizona is a desert community in which we have dust storms and sometimes wildfires, and they should allow more simple reporting of the events. With reference to the ozone levels approved by the EPA for our state, again, I have asked MAGA to urge the EPA to separate the transport ozone, which is the ozone blowing our way from Mexico and California, to separate it from the ozone that is actually generated here in Arizona, and not to hold Arizona responsible for that ozone. Currently, the total ozone in our atmosphere is being considered the responsibility of Arizona, even though we have no control over what is coming from other areas. So we'll continue to pursue that. And do we have any call to the public?
Oh, there.
Okay. Then let's go on to our consent agenda where we have seven items. Can I get a motion for all seven as written?
Mayor, some move.
In a second, please.
Second.
And a roll call.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaChee?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson is absent. Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor six zero.
Thank you. Regular agenda items, consideration of approving the final plat of Las Montañas del Sol Dos, a lot line adjustment of lot number five, APN 176-27-388, that would create a new tract A. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, we'll go ahead and defer this topic to our zoning administrator, Bob Rogers, who will go ahead and give you a brief report on this.
Okay, Bob. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor. This is consideration of a minor replat for a lot, a line adjustment of lot five in the Las Montañas del Sol Dos subdivision. Property line adjustment creates tract A, which will be a non-buildable tract containing the mailboxes for the community. Tract A will become the responsibility of the HOA to maintain. Property line adjustment also redefines the side property line of lot five in order to reduce the setback requirement and allow for a larger building envelope on that lot. The lot does continue to meet the minimum frontage and area requirements in the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Any questions for Bob? Any questions at all? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
I'm here. Second.
And any further discussion?
I will not be.
Okay. And Councilman Brown, abstained. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, five zero.
Okay. Thank you. We have one report for items nine and 10. I will open the public hearing regarding ordinance 15-12, amending the town of Fountain Hills zoning ordinance, chapter six, sign regulations relating to A-frame signs and banners. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Our zoning administrator will give a report on this, but I do want to note that in your packet, we did catch an error late yesterday, and it was too late to actually update the packet. So you do have a memo before you that addresses this. Apparently, the violations that we actually had reported were shown in the staff report before you to be eight, but in reality, it was, they were 60, of which 50 were for those signs without permits. And so the net result was 10 without signed permits. And so the difference basically was going from the previous year, which had nine violations for other causes besides the permit, not having the permit, and going into year 15, basically, to 10. So that's, just wanting to let you know that there was a slight discrepancy. It was staff-founded after some questions that we had of this, and the issue came down to, apparently, there had been a sweep, and it was coded with a different code, as requested by the court to use a certain code when we do sweeps. And so when the staff did the memo, it didn't show up as it normally would because of the code that was used. So we do apologize for that, but the information I just reported is correct at this point.
Thank you. Grady? Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. So this public hearing is for ordinance 15-12. It consists of text amendments to the zoning ordinance that will extend the expiration dates on commercial A-frame signs and also on banners. Section 608B11 relates to the sunset clause for the A-frame signs, and section 608D1C relates to the sunset clause for banners. Unless extended, these two sign types will no longer be permitted in Fountain Hills after December 31st. These signs have, since 2009, typically been given annual extensions in their expiration dates. This year's request is the same, one-year extension of the expiration dates from December 31st of this year to December 31st, 2016. You were provided, as Grady said, with a report from the code enforcement regarding the compliance during the past year, and then an amendment letter or memo. There've been a manageable number of A-frame violations this year. The biggest reason for the apparent improvement is that the permits are no longer required, so the lack of one is no longer a violation. So those aren't counted. Non-permit-related violations have stayed about the same. Banner compliance gradually got a little worse. The numbers are still relatively low, however, and code enforcement should still be able to keep it under control. Planning a zoning commission forwarded a recommendation to approve the extension till December 16th, or December of 2016. The staff also recommends the extensions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel discussion?
Do we talk during this one?
Yeah. Now you talk, yeah. Talk during this one, and then we vote on the next one.
Okay.
Councilman Yates?
Yes. Bob, to borrow a conversation from Councilman, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor LaChee, about, we keep talking about the same ordinance, it seems, over and over again. Not saying that we're completely out of the woods, but in your opinion, or what if we just went ahead and made this a solid ordinance, and then if something came up, if it became an issue again, staff could just kind of bring it to us? Because now I'm beginning to feel we keep bringing it up. I'm not saying it's perfect yet, but we kind of have this conversation every year. I think we may be at that time to go ahead and let's just make this the ordinance, and if something comes up, obviously, staff has the wherewithal to collect the information and come to council.
By a solid ordinance, you mean no expiration?
No more sunset clauses.
That's a matter of policy that you're free to make.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Councilman Yates. I used to be the chair of the Chamber of Commerce Board, and by the way, we also got his support for this from the chamber. And I know that the business community always, well, besides telling us how valuable both A-frames and banners are to them, they also said that they're a big expense, and they buy them up for the year with different sales they're going to have with banners. If there, if something happens to their A-frame, they have to buy a new one. And they'd like to know that they could keep them. The thought that all the money that they're investing on December 31st, they're going to have to lose, is, doesn't work for them. They would like to know that the money that they invest is something that they can keep. And also, you know, I don't think we're, we know the value of A-frames and banners, and we know we're not going to take them away from the people. What we need to do is enforce the ones that aren't complying and not punish the ones that are by constantly letting them have to go through this. So when we first talked about this, that we talked about asking the chamber for help, at that time, they had a new CEO, and he needed some time to probably get into his job. And I think he's really ready to help us as far as education goes. I think we can count on him. So I'm in agreement with Councilman Yates that we just let the staff handle this, just like you handle any other ordinance, and we look for help from the chamber to get the education up. Any discussion? Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Magazine?
I don't know if we can do it right now. Do we need some formal action by council to do this?
After we close the, this session, yes. Then we will do that. Not yet, though. This is just-
But we can make it permanent after?
Yeah. We can do whatever we want.
Councilman LaChee?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, what was, what was the rationale for engaging in this process annually?
If you remember back, A-frames weren't allowed at all.
I do.
Then when council decided to allow them to come back, they wanted to do the annual renewals with the sunset clauses, just to kind of make sure that it didn't get out of hand like it had previously. And that, I understand, is that's the rationale for the annual extensions. And then Prop 207 was adopted, so that if we actually eliminate, then we can never re-adopt the sunset clause.
So basically, basically, the process of reviewing it annually was to make sure people were complying.
Correct.
So what I'm hearing you say is you think it's at a manageable level right now, so...
Yeah, 10, a dozen complaints a year or violations a year is easily managed.
And, you know, I would agree with Councilman Yates, doing it annually is kind of, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But if the, you know, the other side of that is, I'm not sure totally removing it makes a lot of sense either. I mean, I'd be in favor of pushing it out a couple years and reviewing it, three years, four years, something like that. And the reason I say that is that, you know, we have a code enforcement officer that works extremely hard from, it's my understanding, he's usually the first one here in the morning and the last one to leave, and he works four days a week. But I do live in this town, and I do get around a bit, and it's unfortunate, and maybe the chamber can help us with this, but it's really unfortunate that the number of violations, which are not attended to, happen on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, when he is not out there. And that continues to happen, and it's a, it continues to be an issue. So I don't think the data we're looking at is as accurate as we think it is. And the rationale for doing this annually is to kind of keep those numbers in check. Just for example, on weekends on Sunday, we have signs on Shea Boulevard that are out there. We have them in the median on Soro. It's to the point where I used to take pictures, but I'm not in the business of being a code enforcement officer. So I'm not sure things are as copasthetic as they seem, and I'm not sure what the issue there is. But totally removing a review period, I don't think's a solution either. So, thank you.
Well, and, Councilman Brown?
Sure, if I may.
Go ahead.
So I would like to remind everybody that the, when we took, finally took the signs off the street, the comment was that we, our street started to look a little bit like 32nd Avenue and Bell, if you haven't driven through there. Every store has a sign out on the curb, and it's not very attractive. And we did have quite a, quite a battle with the, with the signs for a good year before we finally got it under control. And it was Prop 207 that actually prompted us not to just give them carte blanche, as we've discussed. And I have to say that I agree with maybe a three or four-year extension, but I would hate to completely give it up, because once we give up the ability to retract and take back the signs, if it got to be as bad as it was in 2007, eight, that we wouldn't be able to because of Prop 207. But I also believe that, from what I see, and I have to agree again, it's Saturday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that we see the signs on the sidewalk and in the median. But three or four years would, I think, would make good sense, but I would hate to give it all up, because if we do, we would not be able to ever do anything about it.
If the staff brought it back at some future time because there was some issue, couldn't we make adjustments to it, just like we would be doing right now?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, remember the impact of Prop 207. It is a restriction on your ability to reduce someone's property rights or reduce the value of their property based upon a regulation that you impose. It's been our opinion since we started this process with the A-frame signs that you are at risk of a Prop 207 claim based upon your sign provisions, just like you are in any other provision of the code. This mechanism was intended to make sure you never face that claim, and that you could push out in the future any decisions about the sign ordinance, whether it was A-frames or banners or other things, with the understanding that your Prop 207 window of damages was always limited by that sunset period. And so that's the reason why we built it this way, is to prevent those claims against the town.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Yates?
Well put. I'm more apt to say, let's give a longer run. I've sat with Councilman Brown, I think, three different sign committees, and I think you've got me by one, but nevertheless, I'd like to propose a five-year extension then, but I'm open for discussion, but I think that's long enough. We can get a good sample and...
And then we could, oh, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Andrew. Andrew, if we extend it to five, and we have problems with it, we can't bring it back to two, or three, or four?
It's all a matter of degree at that point. Could someone bring a claim for a reduction from a five-year window down to a three-year window?
Sure.
Okay.
Is it a lesser claim? Probably, but it's still a claim opportunity. The sunset time caps off the opportunity for someone to claim they have a right to it. That right is what has to be compensated if you change it. So the longer you go, the more, you shouldn't, you shouldn't pick a sunset date that is so far out that you worry that you wouldn't be able to do anything in between.
If I may? If we use the number five, this council will never be addressed with it again, and the next council may not have a clue. So I would say three would be a good number.
Councilman Yates?
I'm not going to drill this in. I'm okay with negotiating. It's back to the investment of these A-frame signs, the banners, recapturing that cost, not that it's huge money, but having been in small business, even $100, you try to leverage that as long as you can. Yeah, I'd be okay with four.
Do I hear three and a half?
Henry said four.
Mayor, if I, Mayor, if I may?
All right. Councilman LaChee?
Although, I don't want to obsess on this, but we've been obsessing on it for several years, so why stop now? You know, the A-frames are more manageable based on the data. I mean, we're basically level, as where we were a few years back. The year prior to that, it was totally out of control. But what I noticed in the report, and also talking to Roy, our code enforcement officer, is the banners are like, pretty much, I mean, they're significantly higher, aren't they?
Yeah, they're on the rise.
Yeah, so I'm real comfortable with three years.
Anybody else have an opinion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to call Councilman Nick out on the carpet.
Nick, you haven't said anything.
Speak up.
I mean, for me, I'm, three, five years. I mean, I understand Prop 207 and where that limits us, and we have that protection. So, you know, for me, the A-frames, I wasn't here when it looked like 32nd Avenue, so I never felt that.
It wasn't that.
So, but yeah, I mean, I think anywhere between three and five years is reasonable.
There's your politician.
For me, no, for me, honestly, you know, with what Cecil, Councilman Yates first said, you know, I'm, until I learned more about Prop 207, I was like, why not just let it roll out, right? And then we can, we can strike it all together later if it's horrible, but I was, I was unaware. But I think a longer term would be reasonable. I think businesses like to plan. I know A-frames are expensive. To Vice Mayor LaChee's point, there are way more banners hanging on the side of businesses than there ever been. They're cheaper to print, they're easy to get out. So just indefinite, longer period of time works for me.
Is your non-answer answer?
Councilman Magazine?
If Councilman Brown would make a motion for three years, I'd be happy to second it.
All right. Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then I will close the public hearing and go on to consideration of ordinance 15-12, as just presented. Any further discussion or negotiations, or? Councilman Yates?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 15-12, a text amendment to section 608B11 and 608BD1, to the Fountain Hills zoning ordinance extending the expiration dates for banners, A-frame signs until December 31st, drumroll, of 2020? What is, what is four years? That's what I said? 2020.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I move to amend to three years.
Give me the wine back.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. And any other amendments? We'll vote on the amendment first, all in favor of the three-year amendment.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Let's have a roll call.
Councilmember DePorter?
Nay.
Councilmember Yates?
Nay.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaChee?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Three, three, tie.
Okay. So...
Andrew, who gets?
Andrew, now we vote on the other one, even if it's a tie. Okay, let's go on with the four, and we'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaChee?
Nay.
Councilmember Brown?
Nay.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Nay.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Three, three.
You guys stink.
So now what? We add nothing?
Bar in another motion, you don't have anything, and signs will, A-frame signs will not continue after.
Would someone like to make a motion for three and a half?
I was going to say July, or June 30th. Mayor, I'd like to rescind my motion in the idea of the holiday season and getting along with everybody. I'll go with the three.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. We have three. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaChee?
Aye.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor six zero.
Democracy at work.
Okay, we'll make sure that we reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, this has offered help in spreading education and having speakers in to talk about it, and they promise to work diligently for compliance.
Thank you, Saint Nick.
Okay. And we have now consideration of resolution 2015-54, approving amendment to the town of Fountain Hills personnel policies and procedures amended and restated August 1st, 2013, related to the information, technology policies, vacation leave policy, and personal leave policy, and declaring an emergency. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, before you is a request of staff to amend our personnel policies relating to information technology, our vacation leave policy, and personal leave policy. Essentially, when I was in the, my previous role as the administrative services director, these were some issues that had come up, and namely, we have some arbitrary dates relating to folks who, for vacation leave, before they start losing it. And so other organizations I worked in, it's very easy, whatever accrual rate that you're at, you're allowed to keep up to two years' worth. That does two things. One, it's predictable, the employees know how much they can maintain. And secondly, it limits the impact to the town if you have an employee that might leave after a number of years of service, you know that the cash out or whatever will only be limited to their accrual. So with that, that's what the one policy is relating to vacation leave. The personal leave policy, right now, we essentially allow 30 hours of personal leave every January of each year. The issue with that is that employees who submit their vacation, excuse me, their, their personal leave requests, they go through the process, and it's tracked, but unfortunately, it's counted against their sick leave balance. And so most organizations normally have separate vacation, sick leave, and personal leave balances, or they have a combined balance. But in our case, we don't have a combined leave balance. And it would make sense, in my opinion, to recommend that we amend that so that we have a separate leave bank, so there's no confusion. The, our staff has to actually go back and do adjustments after every payroll period, and there's issues potentially with errors and mistakes. So with that, I recommend that that be amended so that the, we have a separate bank of leave for personal leave. And there's no cost impact at all to this. So, you know, there's absolutely no impact for the town at all. Finally, the last item is relating to information technology policies. We noticed that we needed to do some housekeeping on this. There have been some new technologies that have occurred that we didn't have reference in our, our policies. We have iPads, we have iPhones, smartphones that we have, and we also didn't have guidelines. The policy that we had just basically kind of said, you know, you couldn't have any abuse of our, you know, internet usage, using personal computers for your personal use rather than business use. And so we really didn't have a lot of teeth in the current policy that we have. So our IT staff, our IT administrator spent quite a bit of time working through Craig Rudolphy, our finance director, to come up with what I consider to be a very good policy. And I think it's a best practice policy. There's something like this that we've seen in other Valley communities as well. So with that, unless there's any questions that the council may have, I recommend approval of these. We also have an emergency clause, because our personal leave policy re-ups itself every January. So every January, the employees have a balance of 30 hours available to them. And so that's why we are requesting to declare an emergency on the resolution. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. And Dave Treble is also here. If you have any questions for Dave? Any questions? Yes, Councilman Yates?
It might be for a different topic, a different time, but could you sum up what we do? I know we have several part-time folks. Is it just if they're on, if they're here, they get paid? If they're not, they don't? Not that I want to create a new bureaucracy by any means, but...
No, so that's a very good question. We have a number of part-time employees, and these policies would apply to them. The, we have what's called regular part-time employees, and those are what we call the folks who work 20 hours or more. And based on that, they have available to them what's called PTO or, or personal time off. And so that leave is prorated based on the hours they work. And so that leave is prorated based on the hours they work. So essentially, you work 20 hours, you would have basically at your disposal about half of what a full-time employee would have.
Okay.
So these policies apply to them as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, looking, any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then, looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Mayor, six, zero.
Okay. Managers, let's go to council discussion, town manager. Do you have anything, or do you want to go right to the, talk about number 13? Grady?
If there's no other direction to me, then we can go on to item 13. I wanted to follow up. Councilmember Yates brought to our attention, the last council meeting, he had some specific questions relating to the Saguaro Boulevard street reconstruction project. And I asked Development Services Director Paul Moot to put together a staff report, which is in your packet. Mr. Moot is available here and would be able to answer any further questions that you have relating to this project. So with that, Councilmember Yates, I don't know if you had any additional questions that were in the report or were not addressed by the report.
Councilman Yates?
Obviously, just very excited it's done. It was done within the timeline. We just made it. And I like promoting the fact that we came in under budget. Unfortunately, you know, we don't necessarily leverage those funds. It goes right back to pay the bond off. But I just wanted the folks at home and obviously all our residents to know that we're spending your money wisely, and whenever possible, we try to save money and pay back down what we ask for. And I just wanted to applaud yourself and staff for getting this done. And as we spoke earlier, the road's wonderful, it's beautiful. If you get a chance, go, go drive down Saguaro. But that's about it. Thank you, Mayor.
I just had one question. I read over the punch list, and I noticed that, and some residents have mentioned to me, that the intersecting roads, some of the seams where they stopped and where the old road is a little bumpy, or is that part of it? I didn't notice it in the punch list.
Paul, would you mind coming up?
Thank you, Paul.
Mayor Kavanaugh, council members, those items were on the punch list. I believe they all have been completed. The problem is just the condition of the roads that we're trying to match into is a little difficult.
Okay.
So they, they did their best. We'd have to just keep going and going and going. We'd be chasing it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all right, we'll go on to, yes?
I'm sorry.
Something?
Yeah, I was just reminded, Councilman Magazine and Councilman DePorter, this is their one-year anniversary of being sworn in as council members. I just wanted to recognize that. Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations.
All right, congratulations, your one year.
Survived.
Okay.
And just one other item, Mayor. Also noted in the council packet is, beginning January 7th, we will start broadcasting live on Channel 11 all of our council meetings, starting January 7th. So currently, right now, that's only capable of doing that through, you know, the internet, through the website, through streaming. And so this is a big effort, I think, the council. This is something the council, I think, is a big goal, is transparency. And so this really works a long way so that residents, most residents, much more convenient to flip on the TV and go to Channel 11. So our IT administrator was very amenable to this and indicated there was not a technological reason why we're not, it's just some decision had been made years ago. And so we went ahead and made a decision to go live, beginning January 7th.
That's great.
So that's the end of my report.
Mike makes everything easy. Okay, then, I'm going to go on to my report, which is activities, but I also have some thank-yous, and I really want to get those in. Once again, John and I were honored to be invited to participate in the lighting of the menorah on the avenue for Hanukkah. It was a fun afternoon, lots of food, entertainment, good friends. Grady, his wife Tammy, and their family also were there and joined in the celebration. Now, at the event, I met a wonderful resident of Fountain View Village, and I know he's watching right now. Well, not, he'll be watching when it comes on Channel 11, Dr. Raymond Burston, who he kindly told me that he watches us all the time. So I promised him that I would say a personal hello to Raymond and thank you for watching, and all the other people in Fountain View Village. We had no idea that we were very popular there and that you watch us all the time. I want to extend a huge thank you to the Nun Kwanis for the awesome donation of the tot lot at Golden Eagle Park. Grady, Mark Mayer, the park staff, the Kwanis, and I cut the ribbon on the new playground for ages two to five years. What an incredible donation that would create such a fun time for the little residents of our town. Kwanis, your generosity and hard work are awe-inspiring. Thank you from all of us. Another big thank you to the Nun Kwanis for once again making every parent and grandparent happy with breakfast with Santa. The kids had a wonderful time, and your elves were the jolliest. L. Allen Crookchank River of Time Museum had its official grand reopening. Stop by and see the new exhibits and visit the museum store for tax-free gifts for the holidays. I promise them I say that. Elf in the Hills at the community center was a huge success. Trains, trees, beautiful menorah table, all combined with music, lots of snacks made for a great afternoon. Thank you Heather Ware and your team of elves for a great afternoon. A personal thank you also to the mayor's youth council for all their help at the event. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, CEO Scott Soldat Valenzuela, for a wonderful stroll in the glow. I was happy again to participate with Scott to turn on the avenue holiday lights. Thank you to all the businesses who participated in the event. Many of us got to tour the new dialysis center that just opened here in town. It's an incredible place and so needed by many of our residents. Our own town resident, Jim Judge, has been working tirelessly for three years to bring a center here. Thank you, Jim. We are so grateful for your diligence and hard work. And with that, I know that Hanukkah has just concluded, and I hope everyone who celebrated Hanukkah had a wonderful celebration. Now, Christmas is coming up. On behalf of the council, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Anybody else want to say anything? Yeah, that's it? Okay, then I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Don't you have festivals? Festivals?
What festivals?
For the rest of us.